How's it going everybody? Got another exciting episode of the Kataning Podcast here for you today. We're starting a new series hopefully. I have our very first Commissioner candidate and what I'm planning to do over the coming weeks as we get towards the primary in May, to have as many Commissioner candidates on the program as possible. And so, the very first one, brave enough to come on, very, very appreciative of you being here and reaching out honestly. This is Greg McKelvey and so, very happy to have you sir.
Thank you very much Andrew.
Yeah, so tell us about yourself, your history in Armstrong County, you know, what made you want to run for County Commissioner?
Alright, well again, thank you for the opportunity to come in and talk with you as well as all your followers that you have out there in the various locations and I've watched your videos and I think you're doing a wonderful job and
Thank you, appreciate that.
So that's all great, but Andrew, I've lived almost my entire life here in Kataning. I'm a born and raised product. But you know, was able to live away while I attended school. I went to Penn State. I lived for a while in the Pittsburgh area. I've worked in Pittsburgh and Cleveland, but ultimately for many years ago, I decided to move back here to raise my family. In an area that I knew well with a lot of connections to the people of this area and I don't regret that at all. There may have been, there might be a case that I could have said that when it's all said and done, I could have made more money by choosing to pursue other opportunities and live in other locations, but I don't believe that I would have had the family and the relationships that I have today that make life worthwhile if I had taken that route.
Yeah, totally agree with that, even from a personal perspective.
Yes, yes.
That was kind of in our decision making moving to Kataning as well and you know, we always had the opportunity, hey, go to Pittsburgh and try to be, you know, make big money and do all those kinds of things, but then looked at Kataning and standard of living and those kinds of things. You can, you can really make a good life here.
Yeah, sure you can. There's absolutely, that's the truth. Like you as well, I've done a lot with community service over the years. On a variety of things, but you know, it doesn't, it doesn't make it worthwhile if you're not a part of the community.
Hundred percent.
And that, you know, whether we're talking about the United Way or the Chambers of Commerce or really any events, the things that you're involved with. You can't really be a part of the community if you're not involved in some aspects like that.
Yeah, absolutely. So what did you do for those organizations?
Well, as I said, in over the years, I've served in a variety of community service groups as well as recreational or athletic things. A lot of people remember me from my years in, in the various athletics and I've been involved with athletics really most all of my life too, you know, from as a player, as a coach, as an administrator, but very much so with the hockey, football, basketball, girls' basketball. People know me from helping and working with those groups and I would think also, you know, they, well, a lot of good memories and and I think a lot of good things came out of those times.
Yeah, absolutely. So then you decided to make Armstrong County home and I know you've started businesses over the years and what do you, you know, what all did you do in Armstrong County and what are you doing now?
Well, primarily in Armstrong County, once that we settled and decided we were going to live here, for a number of years, I ran a consulting business. Most of my experience is in the environmental area, primarily water, but other environmental issues and I had a consulting firm. Ultimately, I made a pretty big career choice at one time when I decided to take on a challenge of becoming the general manager of the Kataning Country Club. And that really put us back here solidly. I was working less than a half mile from where I lived. I was there though and we took on a significant challenge there. The club was not doing very well and over a number of years, we got that business going, you know, very nicely for a small country club and I give a lot of that credit to the staff that surrounded me. Nonetheless, there's no question it was a, a significant improvement. And certainly you get to know a ton of people when you're doing that. We did a lot of that success went around bookings business. So when you work with people when they're getting married, for instance, I mean, you develop a pretty nice relationship with them and conversely, when it's all said and done with, they have formed an opinion of not only of you and the place that you're representing. And I think there was a lot of goodwill came out of that and hopefully a lot of goodwill out on the street.
That's awesome.
About our time there at Kataning Country Club. Then two years ago, we moved to East Franklin Township. I mean, we, I mean, myself and my job work. Taking on the position as zoning officer. And that really got me back into public service, working with people on an everyday basis, whether they were adding to their home, helping people build homes, attracting developers and that got myself thinking again about maybe I could have an impact in a little bigger way here again. So that's kind of a synopsis of, you know, what occurred there in my thought process.
That's awesome. Okay. So your title now, you're a zoning officer in East Franklin Township.
That is correct.
Okay. Alright, very good. So what makes you want to kind of take the next step? What makes you uniquely qualified to be our next County Commissioner in Armstrong County?
Well, that's a nice question because I really feel that I bring a diverse set of experience and I'm uniquely qualified. I have a slogan in the campaign called "The Right Man For The Job" and I truly believe that. In that, you know, my career started out as a, in public relations as communications. I was a communications director for a large utility company. It handled a lot of crisis communications, did a lot of television work. But then, and then moved more into marketing and other business startups. And then into again, general manager work, servicing one-on-one with members and customers and clients. And then now into the public service side. It's a, there's a skillset associated with all that, but it's also, it covers a lot. And a lot of the voters that I've interacted with who do know me from the years, do feel that my, my background really does lend itself well. They feel comfortable with me marketing and trying to sell Armstrong County.
Well, I think that's going to be so important for the future of the county because if we're gonna, I don't think the 21st century job market is necessarily going to be one of great expansion in Armstrong County and it's, it seems like us and all the counties around us are really fighting for, fighting for the manufacturers. And so it is going to take someone with marketing, it's going to take a salesman really to bring some of these businesses into, or to just convince a Pittsburgh company to build their next factory in Armstrong County or convince someone to move from Ohio to Armstrong or whatever that's going to look like. I just, I really believe in that.
Yes.
That that skillset's going to be required.
Well, I agree with you. I also will tell you that I think I have a again, over the years and because of the things I've been involved with, I also feel that I have a very strong relationship with with the people of Armstrong Counties. And I mean, just to cut to the bottom level, the movers and shakers of Armstrong County.
Sure.
They know me.
Yeah.
And I think they respect me.
Okay. I love that. Very cool. So I have, I have some major, you know, issues that I do want to talk about. I have a couple of lighter questions here just to begin with, just to get people to know a little bit more about who you are, but tell me, you know, what do you love about Armstrong County? What's your favorite things here?
Well, I would say the answer that, well first, let me say that I think there's a lot of things that I'm still learning about Armstrong County that I have found out since I have now announced for public office. You know, there are a lot of nooks and crannies of this county that I'm now out visiting and experiencing that I did not before. But it's only enhanced my overall opinion. You know, it's the people and it's the places. But I think it's the little things that a lot of our people take for granted because I mean, whether we're talking about walks on trails or just even some, a lot of us, the properties that we own that we wouldn't be able to have in other places. But I have a lot of friends from my college years or people that visit me and you know, they, and they, a lot of other people find it funny that a lot of my friends come from all over the country and they come here to Kataning. They love it here.
Yeah, absolutely.
They love it here. From the, the, the one friend always says, "Everything's so close" or you know, "The things are inexpensive" or you know, "The people were so nice" that's, but, but you know, a lot of times we, I think, take that for granted. But, but I guess the real answer to your questions, I think it's, it's the, it's the trails, it's the knowing people in the restaurants. It's the, it's the concert events that are done through Arts on the Allegheny. Those are the things that I think I really love about Armstrong County.
Yeah, yeah, that's just sense of community here is really special to me as well. I just always, I, I totally agree with you. Whenever my family comes from Minnesota, they're coming from Lakes Country in Minnesota, which is kind of this booming area and the property values are always just going up and up and up. And they come to Kataning and they say, "What a beautiful place." And I just, you know, they're in one of the most beautiful places in the world that people talk about. And, and they come here and say, "What a beautiful place to live." And you know, I just couldn't agree more. I just, it's very underrated and I, one of the main goals of my life is just to kind of change people's mindsets about not only Kataning, but Armstrong County, that this isn't some, you know, podunk backwoods, that it's really, it is a valuable place and it's, and it's worth, it's worth fighting for, it's worth, it's worth trying to improve.
Yes, well, that's your beacon of positive message there sir.
Yeah. So tell me, what's your favorite, what's your favorite place to visit? Now you said places to visit or your favorite restaurant in the county, you know, tell me about those kinds of things.
Well, if you, I mean, when you mentioned restaurants, you're, that's kind of right down my alley because you know, I did work in food and beverage for a lot of years. So, I mean, there's a, that's, and the restaurant scene, I don't know that it's ever been any better.
It's really improving.
But, but when you look at the county as a whole, you can think about nice restaurants all over. I mean, I can go from as far north, there's a restaurant, I guess technically it wouldn't be Armstrong County, but the river's edge, right over the river up across from East, in East Brady. You can go, you go clear down to the Apollo area, you have Flavio's, you go over to Leechburg, you have the Twisted Thistle.
Oh man.
These are all very nice restaurants, which you could take anyone from anywhere to and they would have a nice time. Now you come, I mean, right here in Kataning, the situation is only, I mean, I was, worked closely with Rachel's Roadhouse in bringing them here. You know, I think they've done well.
Absolutely.
The Kraft House is, I'm amazed how well that's going. You have of course, Amano's is now serving dinners as well as the breakfast and lunch. And then you have this new enterprise that the Walker family is doing in the former YMCA. Now on top of all that, you go further up there and you have the long time situation with the Mariner.
Right.
Another, and I was just in there recently and again, the owner, a young man and his wife or girlfriend that are running that, they're doing a really nice job up there. It looks nice and they're doing the things. I mean, that is, it's a tough business folks, real tough.
Absolutely.
But I think those are just many, many good questions. And so, my, to answer, the long answer to everything you just said. If you had to ask me, what is my favorite restaurant, I would probably tell you The Villa. Because of the, the success of that place over 40 years is unbelievable.
They're out the door every night.
And the owner is a friend.
Yeah.
And so I would say it's, you know, that is another, it's unique, but highly successful.
Now, I haven't been to The Mariner yet since they changed ownership, so.
Well, I'd recommend it.
The owner of The Mariner, if you're watching, you know, I want to do a video with you.
Well, yes. His name's Chris.
Alright.
Chris Knightley. And yeah, he, they're, he's, he's there every night.
Yeah. Well, Chris, if you're watching, I'm interested. Let's do something. But I agree with you. Twisted Thistle is amazing food. Amano, I've just been so impressed with every time I've gone there. I haven't been there for a dinner service yet, but I will very soon, for sure. Well, very cool. So now, let's get a little more serious now. What do you, what do you, what do you have as County Commissioner? What do you see as the three biggest problems that you need to tackle over the next four years?
Okay, so that was it for the softballs huh?
That's the softballs. Now we get into the major stuff.
Okay. Well, Andrew, I think you were asking me for three biggest questions, three biggest problems. Number one, we need more revenue. And I don't mean that by tax increasing. Please, it does not mean tax increases.
Yes.
But we need more revenue. There, it's just the, the, everything associated with the county is, is just being cut and it's down to the, to the so, so tight and it's impacting morale. It's impacting the services that are involved. Now, the second thing that is, is I consider a significant issue and there is, we've got to get more infrastructure. The, it's not horrible, but we've still, and we've got some pockets that, East Franklin is one of them, that's very well set up in terms of water and wastewater situations. But the southern, toward the southern part of the county, South Buffalo, where we're right on the cusp of more development, needs wastewater systems. We have, we need improvements on a bigger scale. You know, you'll hear more so, I mean, from the state and federal level, help with 28 someday going to Brookville. That's a highway expansions is obviously the key. There's, but, and the last thing I will say is I think we have a bit of, we've got to enhance our image. So it goes back to the marketing.
Okay.
And some of that image has got to come within our own people. Within our own people. You and I have already, we don't have to sell each other.
Right.
We see the glass half full.
Right.
Unfortunately, we have a lot of other people, for whatever reason, that are seeing it half empty. And that's going to be a challenge and, but something that can and will be done.
I love to, I love to hear that goal as a, as a County Commissioner. You said increase revenue. I'm assuming one of the, one of those things for increasing revenue would be increasing the availability of jobs, increasing the amount of businesses in the county, those kinds of things. How would you try to attract new businesses and sell the county that way? How would you try to fill up areas like downtown Kataning or the North Point project, all those different kinds of things?
Andrew, there's a, well, first of all, you've got to have a foundation and I think that, that the start of it with the new school, that was a, was a big movement in a positive direction, again, from outside. But you can't, you, to have, to bring the jobs and to bring the housing starts, there has to be a solid foundation and it is a part of schools. But it's a part of the other things that we're talking about in the quality of life. So those have to be there as the foundation to build these other things. But with the people that we even have, the entities that we have now between the county and the Industrial Development Corporation here in Armstrong County, I think a solid plan can be developed to market and strategically find and communicate and hopefully secure more job starts in our area. North Point, there's, there are a lot of people that work in North Point. Unfortunately, very few of them go north when they pull out of there.
Yeah.
They're going south and they're going other locations. They're not so much, they're not living in Armstrong County. But, and, and, and there's, there are things that have been positive with North Point, however, and, but we need more.
Yeah.
There's, there's, there's room to grow and, and it is a very nice asset. It really is.
Yeah.
So, so that's one thing. The other, but we also have to keep our eyes on the all these downtowns and these, these boroughs that we have and those are going to be now, you know, over the last 40 years, that has really turned in terms of the types of entities that are going to be in them. They're going to be more service type businesses like you offer here through State Farm. But the boutiques, service oriented, smaller businesses is what I see going into our, our smaller towns. I think the folks down in Ford City and the Borough Council there now with, with Carol and Justin and Mayor Cogley, you know, they, they, along with the people that own some, they've done a really nice job down there in terms of the micro brewery and Harper's Grill and the, and the food truck nights. And, and we could say the same thing about, you know, Kataning and, and some, and the rest of the boroughs, but I'm just, I want to cite them because that's what I see as our, our, our small towns development. So North Point and the small towns are two different types of development.
Yeah. Yeah, I totally agree. And I, I look at the future of the small towns, especially the river towns as really have to start focusing on the trail and building the infrastructure for a different kind of economy, a tourist based economy.
Yes.
To try to build that alongside of the asset of having the county seat and the hospital and the nice education system and make this a place that's desirable to, to live in for someone that is working in Pittsburgh.
Yes.
We want to see the other, the opposite happen too. Not just Pittsburgh people come in Armstrong County to work, but Pittsburgh people move to Armstrong County.
That is exactly right. That is the key. Those, getting people, because I do work with housing starts and, and maybe we'll talk some about some of the programs we have attached to that, but that again is absolute key to the foundation. You know, you want to look, you go into a, a vibrant community and it starts with people, young people and families living in your community.
Yeah.
Because, and going to the grocery stores and going to the theaters and going to the churches. And that, everything comes out off of that.
Okay.
That's my take on it. But I'm also, you mentioned about tourism and I don't want that, I don't want to let that go because I'm, I think that we could go a lot, we could do a lot more on that subject than, than we have currently. Because this, I'm, I am very much pro tourism and I'm very much pro tour. Trails and I am, as I've already mentioned, I am think that the Arts on the Allegheny is a terrific situation for what we have down there in the summer.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm curious, and this isn't on our, on our question list here, but you talked about the foundation of a, of a county or a foundation of a community and you cited education as one of those pieces, like having the new school. And I totally agree. Having a nice new beautiful facility is very attractional as far as a, if you were a family looking to come here with high school aged children, gosh, can't, can't get much better than what we have up there. What are some of those other foundational things that you see that in the county that, hey, you know, we have that one piece? What are some other things that we could work on that would be good foundational aspects to build communities on?
Okay, well, community life, it goes along with that. I mean, there are the people, that's back to my buddies who show up here. People are really nice here.
Yeah.
That we, I think that is there. You can, and Andrew, you are a living example of how a person can come into our community and make a significant impact in a fairly short period of time. How long have you lived here?
I've been here seven years.
Okay, well, but a lot of people wouldn't know it from that, but over the last few years, I mean, you've been such a dynamo in not only the work that you're doing in your professional life, but the, in the community with the downtown Kataning, the church that you're involved with. So, I mean, the opportunity is certainly there.
Oh yeah.
But the other thing, there's, the recreational pieces here are important. I mean, in terms of, right, I mean, we talk about the Belmont, it is really an Armstrong County owned and facility. Primarily, I'm sure most of the, well, that's not true. It's all over. It's a wide draw with the hockey. But the Belmont is again, something that, you know, it's, if you, if we're down to just cutting every dollar, you're, the Belmont's never going to be a huge moneymaker.
Right.
But I can tell you firsthand that the Belmont was a huge part of my kids and my life over the last 25 years.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's, so it's a, you know, people love the Belmont. And so that's, you know, it's other part, recreation, facilities, we're talking, whether we're talking Little League fields, now we've gotten much better with the new high school. Our facilities are a lot better there.
Okay. Alright, I was just curious. I was just wondering if you had any other, so it sounds like you kind of think the foundation is, is pretty solid.
You can't really, I, I think, I mean, could it be better? Sure, sure. But we're never going to have everything. We've got to have enough to get in there to, to, to try to make a deal.
Right, yeah, okay. That's kind of how I feel too. It's like, with this foundation's there, we just need to start selling it now.
Yeah.
And that, that's kind of where I'm at. I was just curious. So anyways, second big, big problem that I talk about on the channel a lot, or that I'm really focusing on in 2019 moving forward, is the opioid epidemic. It's high on everyone's list of issues around our area. As you know, I'm sure just a few years ago, we were number four, or number two in the state. I think a couple of years ago, we were number four in the state. It's showing improvement, but what would you do as a County Commissioner to try to help continue to move that ball forward and conquer the opioid epidemic in our area?
Andrew, I want to say that that, this is a subject, you know, first, that I have not had a lot of personal involvement with. But I have tremendous sympathy for the families that have.
Absolutely.
And as we both know, this crosses all demographic levels.
Right.
As it's, and I think, I do not claim to be an expert in, in this subject area. However, a lot of, in the same way that we've talked about other things, I think the education, recreation and working, working and having activities available. For me, and maybe someone would say it's old school today, but I feel like if a young person, and these are, the opioid epidemic is not just young people, we all know that.
Right.
It goes, but the less time you have on your hands, the less I think you're going to be involved in this kind of an activity.
Sure.
You have, if you are active and feel good about yourself, you're getting up and going to a job. That is like the, to me, the number one thing we could do to provide, to fill people's time, have them working towards something that they have some passion for.
Yeah.
And you know, sure, I am sure an experts in the field would say, "Oh, well, we've heard all that" and that, but, but that, that is my short answer to it. And as far as, I, I've had conversations with some officials who have told me that the situation is improving. And, and, and I believe them.
Yeah.
I don't think we're going to be number two on the list. That was just a horrible thing to be said. And I think there, you know, some things associated with that, but still, we all know it's, it's a problem and it's far beyond Armstrong County, but it's a problem that it is a very high, high issue that's got to be dealt with.
Yeah. Yeah, I totally agree. And I've, yeah, I'm, I've said in other videos too, I don't, I don't think we necessarily have an opioid epidemic. I think we have a hope deficiency. You know, when people are hopeless, they turn to other things.
That's a good point.
And so I love when you're saying, "Hey, we need to give other things to do" and I think, I do believe gainful employment and that gives you a certain hope for the future and it makes you, once you get a little taste of what success feels like.
Everyone wants to feel good. People, everyone wants to get up in the morning and go to work. I really believe that. I mean, it's.
That's what we're created for.
Yeah.
Yeah, hundred percent. Okay, very good. Blight is a huge issue in the, in the county and Kataning especially, and in many of the other communities. You probably have some, some specific things you could tell us about that, being in, in East Franklin, doing the job that you're doing there. But you know, what would you do from the county perspective to be able to help the individual communities deal with the problem of blight?
Okay, well, again, you're talking about a, a subject there that I do have some experience with.
Yeah, absolutely.
I served, the county appointed a group of people to work on a special committee for, for blight. And I was fortunate enough to be asked to be a part of that. And that group put together a, a white paper and, and in the process of creating a land bank.
Okay.
We have, through that group, the county was able to get some demolitions done, one here in Kataning, two in Leechburg, with the beginning of the program.
I was very excited about the first one in Kataning that day.
Yes, yes. And, but even within the township, before all this started, I started addressing that issue.
Okay.
And my take on it is sort of, years ago, there was a mayor in Pittsburgh, Bob O'Connor, who came from a, you know, he was a, people, he unfortunately passed away after, not long after he was in office. He, and but people loved him. He was a roll up your sleeves type guy.
Yeah.
And he had a program called Red It Up. And he brought that into the city. Well, I kind of brought that to the township in terms of demolitions, auto salvages.
Yeah.
And, and general cleanups of property. So every year, I'm in the process right now of making my list, it'll go out. People are going to start getting letters from me. And a lot of times people kept saying, you know, a lot of these, "How are you going to get them to do this without us, you know, forcing legal action, taking them into court?" I really haven't had to.
Yeah.
There's a way of approaching, most of the time, they know they need to do something. We try to bring other avenues to it. Maybe I get them, a contractor, put a number of projects together so that it's less money for them to spend and we give them some kudos on the backside, "Nice job." But whether we're talking commercial or residential, we've, we did, I think we did 12 in 18 months in East Franklin Township. You know, even the people at the county were, wow.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And the same thing with vehicles. We have a program that the salvage yard will come free of charge, come to their property, pick up the. And the same thing with vehicles. We have a program that the salvage yard will come free of charge, come to their property, pick up the vehicle. All they have to do, go down and be paid for it.
Wow.
And there's, there's so many of the, you know, I don't care whether we're talking about the Katanning, Ford City areas, anywhere in the county, Leechburg, go anywhere. And you start making, you will find some people who have collected vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
That there's really no value to it.
Right.
And, uh, and, and that, I would take this same program I'm talking about unofficially, let's call Red It Up.
Yeah.
I want to take that on a larger scale and work with all the municipalities in our county with that program right there.
Yeah. Hey, I think you could sell Red Up Armstrong County. I think we could make that happen. So, you're seeing some success with that already in East Franklin.
Absolutely.
That's awesome.
Absolutely. And I, we didn't have to do it by taking a bully stick out and beating people over the head.
Yeah.
Uh, now, I will tell you some of the same people I had a year ago, I'm back, they're getting another letter.
Sure.
But they know what we're going to talk about.
Yeah. And you're setting up a, a standard, you're setting up a, a, a system.
And then it's really nice to go back and see these, like, like on the vehicles to see, all of a sudden, hey, that's gone.
Yeah.
That's gone. Or properties that were eyesores that are now demolished.
Yeah.
And you see, and, and the, the neighbors love it.
Absolutely.
And that is a program that's going to go on. I, you know, when I'm on the trail now and I'm talking to municipalities and township supervisors and everything. This is a sensitive, this is an area that we can get some traction on. It is a high level. The vast majority of people, when it comes, they want to have pride in their properties.
So what do you think, I don't know, this, why do you think it's so difficult for city officials to, to just ask people to do something? I don't understand that.
Well, I'm not sure I, I don't buy into that because I, I think that's really what I've done at first.
And it's working.
I think they feel it is working to some extent. I think, because really, the, the, the legal, going the legal road and, and the threatening aspect of it is, it's, it's more difficult. You end up in an adversarial situation as opposed to, let's try to, uh, you know, work on a situation.
Yeah. I, I like that. Okay, very good. Um, well, this is another one. Uh, this is kind of my fourth, uh, fourth biggest problem here. Uh, many of our cities are struggling to manage the problems that they face. Um, you know, a lot of the local, I think of our city council is full of, you know, part-time people. They, they have full-time jobs outside of there. They're not a full-time, you know, city council person. Uh, they're all just dealing with very limited amount of hours and struggling to deal with all the bureaucracy that comes with having to work with the county, having to work with the state. How can we help our local communities, um, do things like fight for grant money, um, get help from the state? How can we get more of that help from the bigger entities into our actual communities?
Well, you know, if I had all the answers to everything, you know, I, but, and I don't want to perceive that I do have all the answers. Everything that I've always done, I will say that, but, you know, we, my mantra, the way I operate is it's a day after day, week to week. And, you know, you, you put forth a positive steps. I'm sure that you, you're doing the same thing.
Yeah.
But, you know, we need to have more of an orchestrated message and plan to work with these levels of government. They exist.
Yeah.
Whether we're talking what we do from the, the county level, let's bump up now to the state level. And then let's talk about the federal level. You know, the grant monies, the programs that are there. It's, anybody that's lived around here and involved in politics will tell you, we did lose a significant, uh, advantage when John Murtha was our federal congressman. He was one of the top congressmen in the United States in terms of impact. And he did a lot of things here, like Katanning Riverfront Park.
Yep.
North Point tenants that unfortunately, we haven't been as, as, as much benefit on.
Right.
And, but we need to go again and hope that work to just keep working to try to get those things. I think that the relationship now, we have a brand new representative for our United States Congressman in G T Thompson. So, not that, uh, and, and our former Congressman Mike Kelly, he's also a good man from the auto dealership in Butler. And, uh, you know, he's a very approachable and a, and a solid citizen. But the, but I think, you know, now's a good opportunity to try to forge that get in stronger with Mr. Thompson, Representative Thompson, who happened, you know, I've had an ability to talk to him a little bit now. And, uh, I know he, he's from the State College area. He was a Penn State man like myself. Uh, and, uh, I think we can, uh, you know, try to get it, get in there and start to get a, a part of his attention. Armstrong County had, there's no question about it when this district helped him very much go, go into this, uh, this new district, put him in office. And I don't think he'll forget that. Don White never forgot about this area because of that.
Yeah.
And, and I feel that we'll have a very strong relationship, uh, should the Republican Joe Pittman succeed him.
Right.
And we hope that happens.
Yeah. Well, very good. Um, yeah, yeah. I don't know, this, it's a, it's a very difficult problem. Uh, but certainly it's been very frustrating over the, especially the first few years that I lived here. It seemed like Ford City Council, constant turmoil, Katanning Council, constant turmoil. But it seems like now both of those cities seem to have solid leadership. They're, they're starting to put together a vision. And I think that is such a key, like, if we could have a vision as a county and then have individual visions that could kind of line up with all the communities in the county, and we all start pushing the same direction.
Yes.
Man, that would be so powerful.
Yes.
And then to be able to present that to someone like
One last thing I wanted to touch on, on that.
Yeah.
Too, is a piece of that is, again, don't, when you're talking about development, and don't ever forget about our water and wastewater. Even the places that we have them are going to have to be, uh, redone and instructed. And that's an area that, the, the earlier parts of my career was very much involved in environmental. And I, I actually get a chuckle out of how many people I talk to now in engineers and municipals, officials, that are still the same people that I worked with thirty-some years ago.
Yeah.
In, in terms of water and wastewater. So, but that's an area, you know, that I, I have some experience. I've, and I think I can bring some things to the table there in terms of, uh, what it takes to, uh, get the monies from both the state and the federal level in terms of, uh, you know, water development.
Yeah, okay. I love it. Very good. Uh, well, just a couple of questions left. Uh, we have, uh, this one's, always comes up. Uh, it seems like this is the first thing everybody wants to talk about when they talk about Armstrong County, is taxes. There's a lot of complaints about taxes that they're too high or that they're too cumbersome. Uh, what's your view on that issue? You know, how do we, how do we solve that problem long-term? The perception of it or the actual problem itself?
Well, no one wants to pay whatever they perceive as a, you know, an, a, a high taxes. And, and the whole big subject area of property taxes versus switching to sales tax and that. I'm not, we can't really debate that here.
Right.
I mean, that, we're going to be, for the foreseeable future, having property taxes.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to pay those.
Right.
And as we know, the largest percentage of that is involving our school taxes. At least you and I agree, our school situation with a, with a, uh, a school serving the bulk of the county populace is, has been a very good thing and is certainly something that will be nice on a marketing level. The one, you know, I think you have taxes, but you have to say, what are you getting for them?
Right.
Now, we have had an initiative over the last two and a half years here in this county called the LERTA Tax Exemption Program. Where if you build a new home, or even it's been expanded, if you do a, an addition to your home, you will receive a ten-year phase-in on the newly assessed value.
Okay.
So you had a, for instance, though, but let's take a new housing start and a person builds a home that is, you know, uh, worth between, let's, two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. With this program, first year, no property taxes. Second year, ten percent, twenty, thirty, up till then.
Yeah.
So, the theory behind it has been that it's a, you know, it would be an incentive. Yes, we're going to wait on those taxes, but we hope that there'll be enough development, that this will be a win-win program.
Yeah.
So, the respective townships, municipalities, the school district and the county have all signed off on this program. There's currently, I believe fourteen, and I know there's more coming, that have opted into this program. This is a program I work with in East Franklin Township. And I'm here to tell you that we have built, have housing starts that have come in solely because of this program.
Yeah.
A new, brand-new construction on a home, in most cases, in the value range I'm talking about, this is worth over thirty thousand dollars.
Wow.
And it will instantly bring their taxes down in that ten-year period to those comparable or lower in the northern parts of the area into Clarion, Red Bank, Clarion County. So, with much more services, again, I'm talking from East Franklin Township in terms of snow plowing, road maintenance and the highway situation.
Yeah.
That's a keeper, sometimes, so, are we ever going to please people with what their taxes are? Probably not.
Yeah.
But there are some things here that we, there are programs that can be implemented that make a significant difference. This LERTA is something that I speak about quite often and I'm working with it on a daily basis because I, I mean, it's just a terrific benefit for new homeowners and new construction.
Well, yeah, absolutely. And if we could get more of those quarter million dollar homes, I mean, I, I moved here from Greensburg. I'm originally from Minnesota, but moved here from Greensburg. And it was like, around Greensburg is all housing plans of two fifty to three fifty. And it's just, there's, there's tons and tons of them. And same thing in Butler, same thing in Indiana. How do we, how do we get those kinds of plans in Armstrong County?
Well, that's, that again, will be an area that I feel, because I've got my feet wet
Yeah.
in this, uh, I have some opinions and I have been working with some developers for East Franklin Township. But I think we have, for instance, we have areas of property that can be developed. I mean, is, are there, you know, tremendous amount of places? Maybe not, but there are.
Oh, yeah.
We have a number here in the Katanning area that could be, they might take a little bit of reclassifying. Whether it's owned by the, and by the County Industrial Development Corporation, some of them are, or even in some other areas that are privately owned right now. That could be converted because we have water and wastewater available. That, that gets us
Yeah.
a long way down the line.
Yeah.
And, uh, and it's so, that is an area that I really would be, as county commissioner, going in on hard.
Yeah.
Because it all feeds back to what I just said from the very beginning, setting that foundation on the table.
Yeah.
Uh, we have though, for instance, the, the, the only, uh, units that we have right now in, in the whole, in this whole general area, maybe in the entire county, that's homeowners association, is Glade Park Drive out by the hospital.
Right.
Well, it's thirty-five years old.
Yeah.
Now, we need a new, we've have a whole, we've got people, I hear from them on a weekly basis, who are ready, willing and able to sell off their homes and move to these places.
Absolutely.
Ownership. But you've got to combine that too with projects like the Katanning cottages and the project that's planned, um, for the former middle school.
Yeah.
Those are, those are the type, we need that type of housing, uh, in this county to fit the populace.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. And I, you know, it's great to build them one at a time, you know, replace an old farmhouse with a new one and get the LERTA tax credit, those kinds of things. But if we could start building twenty, thirty, fifty at a time.
Yes, and they fit into these programs as well.
Yeah.
A condo development would.
Then you can transform an area really quick. Very good. So, uh, I'm, I'm kind of obsessed with this idea of having a, having a vision, having an overall vision. And so what's your overall vision for Armstrong County? Uh, you know, say you have a couple of terms as county commissioner. What would it look like in eight years if everything goes exactly how you envisioned it to happen?
All right, just my chance for the big finish.
This is, this is your big chance here.
All right, well, here's my vision, Andrew. I think Armstrong County is a diamond in the rough. You know, I've, I've told you that I've lived here my whole life. I've watched, I grew up here. I grew up in Katanning. I know what Katanning was like in the nineteen sixties and the seventies and, but what I, and these, ten years from now, it's not going to be that. It's going to be different. It's going to be, the, the downtown areas will be more of these types of businesses, small shops and service type things. But I see things, as we also touched on, and as I know you do, we see it half-full.
Yeah.
But I see towns like, more closer to here, like Oakmont. A place that I visit, a lot of people know I was involved. I, I, I golf and I, that's much one of my recreations. But I, I visit a place to play golf called Southern Pines, North Carolina. Just a great place to visit. Uh, that used to be a railroad town and that, that's my type of vision. Chagrin Falls, Ohio, another town. Maybe if anybody, some of our listeners and, and viewers may be familiar with that.
Yeah.
These are the types of small towns that are vibrant, welcoming, and people want to become a part of. And that's what I think we're going to be looking at. Comp, and contrast that, then we will still have some of these newer industries. Not necessarily where there's hundreds of people in manufacturing, but they will be in related type positions. So, they'll live and outside of our towns, Katanning, Ford City, Freeport, Apollo, Leechburg. A lot of them will be going to North Point to work. They may even work even outside those areas. If they'll be anxious to come back at the end of the day to take in this quality of life that involves shops, restaurants, churches, et cetera.
I love it. Very, very good. Well, uh, what, uh, what can people do to support you? How can they get ahold of you if they have additional questions that we didn't cover today? Uh, you know, what's the best way to get involved with your campaign if people want to make sure that you're our next commissioner?
Okay, well, we are just in the process now of getting out all of our campaign materials. And, uh, you'll be seeing a lot more of Greg McKelvey, County Commissioner, here in the coming weeks at events. But our, you, we have a Facebook site, Greg McKelvey, County Commissioner. My, all my contacts, information's on there. There's a little more information about my career and, uh, pictures. But, uh, I guess the thing, just stay tuned, keep involved. You will be seeing information about us and, uh, and the things that we hope to do. And if nothing else, I hope I get a chance to meet a lot of your viewers at various events here over the next few months. And, uh, so I very much hope for your support on May twenty-one as your candidate for Republican, candidate for County Commissioner of Armstrong County.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, as always, guys, I'll put all the links for, to contact Greg, especially through the Facebook page, in the description of this video. And so if you want to get ahold of him, please be sure to do that. Uh, Greg, I can't thank you enough for, uh, being brave enough to go first.
Yeah.
Hopefully we can coax some of the other ones on here now as well. And they'll be as brave as you. And, um, I wish you the best of luck, my friend.
Thank you.
All right. That's it for today, you guys. Uh, God bless you. I will see you real soon in the next one.